Okay. Let's call the budget meeting to order. We all stand again for the question. The question is, "To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all." There you go. Adam, what do I have? Let's get a roll call of the member present for the budget meeting.
Hey, Councilmember Wetton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Paparazzi.
Present.
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
And Councilmember Sims.
Present.
Seven present.
Awesome. And before I forget Wednesday's meeting, I'd like to propose one slight change. The statewide 911 fund, for some reason, is on our September 25 budget meeting when, in fact, all the other 911 stuff is on a different night. So I'd like to move that to the other night. And I've already addressed that with the commissioners in 911. Just got to do it in peace, Dale.
Sounds good.
Okay. Let's get started with tonight's festivities. Just to refresh from our last meeting, our goal here is to hold the line as close to 2019 budget numbers as possible. With that having been said, we are going to be reviewing non-mandatory or inflationary increases closer to the end of our budget session. Again, if you add up all the requested increases, we're over $2 million and we simply don't have a fraction of that available. So our goal and our approach is to get through our second reading on all these, revisit any increases with a better understanding of how much money we really will have left after those sort of nondiscretionary increases have to be interpolated in. So if I were an office holder and I were looking for some increases, I might be prepared at third reading to come up with a strategy by which I might find money in my budget to fund those increases rather than just simply ask for an increase to your budget. That might greatly increase your chances of getting the changes to your budget that you're looking for, line by line. So we'll lead off with the airport. Very good. How are you?
Thank you.
You're good.
So let's talk quickly about the changes to your 19 and 2020 budgets.
Okay. Aviation Fund is prepared as normal, just showing a 5% contingency for any raises given during this session, budget session. We do that because the board cannot raise our tax levy in this review. You can only modify it by lowering it. So we show a 5% just to allow that and not have to do an additional if there are raises granted.
All right. And then your special airport Cume Building Fund. Of course, you're doing some stuff out there. Why don't you tell us what's going on with the airport?
Very good. The Airport Authority has recently petitioned the local Department of Local Government Finance to reestablish the airport cumulative building fund rate. Currently, that fund is rate reduced to .0017 for 100 assessed valuation. It was originally established at .0033, and that is the rate that we're asking for in the reestablishment. About 2003, the board started reducing rate-controlled funds like Cume Funds if they were not reestablished. At that time, the process you had to go through was a process of rescinding and reestablishing that rate. With two bond issues that the airport was involved with, we pledged funds, both from operation and cumulative funds, towards those debt services. So we really couldn't go and rescind those. And unfortunately, we have seen a rate reduction from what it was .0033 in 2002 to .0020, falling to as low as, right now, .0017, one-half the rate that it should be. We have a lot of needs out at the airport. We had an opportunity to talk a little bit with the council when you were at the airport on the road. The airport is number one in the state for based aircraft, and we're really running out of places to put those airplanes. So we have a program that would combine that rate increase with a revenue bond issue that we're considering. This would be our third revenue bond issue. The 1996 issue was paid off in a refunding and development bond to our current 2008 series. And right now, with interest rates the way they are and the need that the airport has, we're looking to do a 2019 issue and take advantage of those interest rates.
What questions does the board have for them? Can I get a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it to get the discussion.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Am I correct in that your motion encompasses 9991 and 9992?
Yeah. The $100,000 increase, $50,000 for roadway taxis, the other mobile equipment, if you're going to do a bond issue, I'm assuming for taxiways and roads.
Yes.
Tea hangers, et cetera, et cetera.
The reason that is broke down like that, I believe we did, in that roads and taxiways was a portion and also the equipment. The buildings that we're going to build are going to produce about $58,000 of additional revenue. So we are still paying a portion of that bond out of the operational funds from those proceeds. So really, what we're looking to pay as far as bond proceeds there is just for the taxiway development and any sort of participation we have with equipment. Now, airport equipment is very, very costly. When you look at a airport vehicle new, it could be $600,000 to $700,000. What we have been doing historically is using depreciated equipment from other airports, depreciate it only on paper. They're mid-time diesel engines, still a lot of good use in them. So as they get appropriations from the FAA to buy new equipment, we've been buying their old equipment. It's allowing us to do a better job maintaining the airport. It's not brand-new stuff, but it works good for us. We have that avenue that we need some funds to buy used equipment. And then we also participate in a program that the General Services Administration puts on, and that is, they call it GA excess. So we'll go on to a program, for the most part, and we'll find snow removal equipment, airport-related fire trucks, that all we have to do is pay the transportation charges to get them from wherever they're currently stationed to the airport. So, Mr. Paparazzi, to answer your question, our priorities for this funding will be largely taxiways for additional corporate and private tea hangers first, or corporate and private hangers first, building a third airport tea hangar, second, and then land acquisition at the east end of the airport. Land acquisition is in our CIP, but it is one that we can garner some good FAA and state participation with and perhaps even RDA participation. The secondary taxiway development at the airport, the hangar areas, are ones that don't compete well for FAA and state priority funding. So those are the ones that we have to handle locally. And probably the most cost-effective way to do that is through the revenue bond and getting the rate of the Cume Fund back up to what it was in 2002 before the state mandated rate.
I guess that's going to be my next question. Do you guys have the ability to double your Cume Fund?
Yeah. It's actually, it's been approved already by the state.
So you have the ability to double your Cume Fund?
Because it was rate-reduced by the state, yes.
I don't care about that. You have the ability to double your Cume Fund without our permission?
You have to approve the budget and levies.
But you doubled your rate from .17 to 33.
Yes. That is our request.
And now you're asking for another $100,000 on top of that.
No. That would be funded. That rate change is going to generate about $155,000.
Right.
We're putting 2/3 of that amount into that budget fund. The other $50,000 roughly, we would use to let it accumulate to buy equipment.
So this $100,000 increase you're asking for?
Is going to be funded through the $150,000 that would come to you.
You don't get your rate.
That's correct.
Vicki, what does that do overall?
I mean, their rate's part of our rate, isn't it?
No.
No, it's outside.
It's outside.
It's outside, bud.
Right.
I can't hear.
It's still going to have an impact on everybody, right?
Right. Everyone in the county pays the airport rate. Like, everyone pays the county rate.
Right. Their rate's not inside our rate?
No. They're separate. They're considered a special unit.
Just to try to put some cost of the taxpayer effect on this, it's estimated that for every $100,000 assessment, this will only raise the tax bill by $1.60.
Add what?
A $1.60. For every $100,000 of assessed value.
Maybe.
It would increase the tax bill by $1.60. And the other thing that's probably good to point out at this time, in 2002, the last year that the fund was at its originally established rate, our total airport tax rate, including the operation, was .0155. Under the proposal for the 2020 budget, our total rate is proposed at .0098, which is .0017 lower than it was in 2002.
Well, if you want to go into that discussion, we could talk about AVs. Tax rate means nothing to me because the AV is risen, so your tax rate's gone down. I'll make a motion to submit it as approved.
Oh, sorry, that motion was...
Was it? I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think you might have made it.
I have another question, though. When you guys say you're spending $205,000 or whatever on the buildings, and it generates $58,000 in revenue. I know a lot of my friends rent hangers from you guys out there. Where does, how does that revenue return? Where does that revenue place?
Okay. Most of the hangers that are at the airport, they lease the land from the airport, they own the improvement. So when we talk about the corporate and private hangers that are within the briefing that I gave you, that money's coming back in land leases to the airport and going directly into the operation of the airport. For our $1.415 million operational budget, we self-generate about 56%. And that is coming from land leases, farm leases, aviation services we provide, and the fuel that we sell. So all that comes back to the operation of the airport. With this cumulative fund request, you know, this is more to try to help us keep up with the demand on a capital standpoint.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Vicki, there's, I mean, I understand it's outside, but there's only so much, I mean, as they increase their tax rate, there's only so much until people hit the taxes, right?
I think he's asking if this falls under the tax cap.
Yes, they do.
So this is pretty pressure on other units, then? I mean, as we raise any...
So will it create a tax cap credit and spread out the...
They're going to get a funding loss through the tax cap, just like the county.
Yeah, but I think what he's asking is if we do things that push taxes up on people that are already at the cap, it creates a bigger tax cap credit.
Right. It does. It does. That's why there's that argument that other taxing units that push you over the tax cap, you're penalized.
Right. That's correct.
Correct.
Does that answer your question, Jeremy?
Yes.
All right. Let's get a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Graham.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Paparazzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
No.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wetton. No. So I have four yeses to, four yays to three nays.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. So Vicki, I guess we need to have a bigger discussion, which is, conjures up my no vote, not so much for them, but I'd like to have a bigger discussion about that question. What will this do to the tax caps? And how many houses and parcels do we have that are at the tax cap limit? We need to talk about that stuff. If we're going to be creating a burden on other taxing authorities, we probably need to understand why.
Every year gets worse.
Yeah.
Especially if there's other units that are proposing the same thing.
Right.
I know. Let's get rid of the tax.
Okay. Coroner.
Part of the Constitution.
I know.
How are you?
How are you?
Good. You have the coroner's budget in front of you yet? It looks like there's an increase here, just shy of $20,000.
I assume that's autopsies.
Autopsies are my biggest one because we're starting to work with the Heroin Overdose Response Task Force with Porter County Sheriff's Department. And what that is, is they're going to start, well, they've been in the process of prosecuting the dealers that caused these deaths. And the reason why we need to increase the autopsies are not only because the pathologist has raised his fee, but there is a possibility that at some point, we'll have to do an autopsy that we have not ordered ourselves. And that, let me try to explain this. We don't do autopsies routinely on every overdose if it's obvious. We do toxicology every time. We are in contact with Sergeant Dave Murray, and he is with the multi-enforcement group. And what they do is they'll have us hold the body for a couple days. And if their investigation goes to the point where they think that they can prosecute a dealer, they will request an autopsy to rule out any other kind of death for that person. So that's why I'm bumping it up a little bit. It's always been about $15,000, and I'm bumping it up to 20, just in case, because I don't know what next year's going to bring. We're doing okay right now, but I'm just not sure how it's going to go.
So in 2018, you expended $155,000, just shy of $155,000. It looks like in '19, so far, you've expended about $127,000 on your consultants line item.
Mm-hmm.
And you're expecting to spend how much by the time yours is in?
I don't think, I'm thinking we're not going to go over that.
Go over what?
What our line is right now.
$170,000?
We're doing okay.
I'll make a motion to make it $170,000. If she means going next year, come back and see us.
Exactly.
Here goes.
I think that's...
Second.
I mean, I hope we don't have to lose.
So there's a motion in a second, so I assume the budget's the same as 2019, then?
Yes.
Well, yeah, there's another $500 increase, too. So you're dropping everything to the same, Bob?
Well, she moved a few things around, so maybe we should... I mean, okay. So Bob, you're...
I'm just talking about the autopsy.
Yes, we're suggesting the consultants to back to $170,000.
Okay.
And then let's just keep on trucking here.
Yeah.
Your telephone, you took down to $2,000?
Yeah, a lot of the deputies, they just use their personal phones instead of the county phone, so there's no reason to have that.
And uniforms and clothing, you just up $500?
We had to flip some money this year, so I just thought their clothes are wearing out.
Looks like you expended about $700 last year. You're close to $1,000 this year.
Mm-hmm.
Probably pretty reasonable. Okay. What's your pleasure with this budget, then? Tell me about the uniforms. You okay with the $500 increase?
Yes. Just your autopsies.
So the motion is to approve the budget with the consultant line item at back to $170,000. Everything else is proposed, right? Vicki, what's that number?
$1,500 less than last year.
Okay, so $370,000 and $68,000.
You're right. Most understand that? Bob?
Yeah. Second, sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Ways and measures.
Same as last year, it looks like?
Right?
There you go.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So motion in a second to approve the 2019 numbers, $74,000, $921, I think. Am I reading that right?
Yep.
Questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Veterans? You got maintenance and software increases, huh?
The software should be the same. Then the state picks up one, and I've asked for an increase because of having both of them use software to save trips downstate for appeals. So that should have been the same, 500, I believe. The software, the maintenance contract went up $464, huh?
So that makes his new number 101,715.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks.
You, too.
Extension.
I have an ear infection, so I can't hear very well.
All right. Well, we'll try to talk loud, which is very uncharacteristic of us.
Appreciate it.
So you got the salaries the same, but you got your hourly up a little bit? And it looks like maybe you got travel up a little bit, maintenance agreements up?
So we have a couple of things happening. So we had a grant that helped to cover a part-time person that was doing our STEM activities. And so all of that money will be depleted in December. And so we were wanting to reinstate that. Probably we could take a little less in that. $4,000 would probably be enough because we haven't been as, I think with some of our current part-time money, we won't have to add the complete $6,000. The travel, it looks like we're going to run short this year. But maintenance agreements, we keep going over our color copies, so we were asking for a little more in that. Contractual services are requested by the 2.5% that Purdue requires for the increase this year. And then we've had some different funding structures that helped us with our computer costs. And so every time an educator was, position was empty, then we were able to collect that money and use it for technology. But we don't have any money in that account anymore. So that's why we have that new increase in cost.
What's your pleasure with this budget?
How many do you want me to get?
You want it?
How many do you want me to get?
You're a ring.
Well, this is an example of they get a grant, they hire somebody, the grant runs out, now we've got to fill the gap.
I would have been surprised if you didn't speak up.
You want me to be quiet?
Nope. You've mentioned that a number of times when we...
That's what we do.
We all, yeah.
And we've always cautioned them that when the grant runs out, they go home.
Indeed, we have. So again, back to my question, what's your pleasure with this budget?
We feel like that it's been very successful in helping us get the STEM education out. And the grant also paid for equipment. So that was, so we have a lot of STEM equipment. We have a 3D printer, 3D pens, a lot of different activities that we're able to take out into the community to help children learn more about STEM and science and technology.
How much did you lose, how much are you losing by way of this grant?
So we lost $6,000 by way of the grant for staffing.
So I look at your hourly, it looks like maybe you've extended, or expended only $17,000, just shy of $18,000 for the year?
Pardon me?
You've only spent $18,000 of your hourly so far this year, which is...
Yes. And I really, and so I really feel like that we have enough in there to make it through this year. We are paying that program assistance that we have for our STEM grant. We are paying both county, with some county money, as well as the grant money.
Okay. Well, I need a motion of some sort.
Well, we can't argue about Purdue. They raised it 2.5%.
Right.
I'll make a motion to leave the hourly at $30,000, leave the rest of the increases in there.
What would that be, then, like $270,821?
Travel.
$270,821, I think so.
He's just saying, take the hourly down to 30.
They put them all back to what was requested.
They just take the hourly back to 30. That's $6,000 less than...
Yeah. We moved everything back to 2019, so now we have to put them back.
That's good. That's fine. I understand. Well, the number's $270,821. Is that your motion, Bob?
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Solenwater.
The big increase.
A little change to your other supplies, $4,000 bucks there.
Magnifying glasses went up in price.
Wow.
Quite a bit. So I buy about $4,500 each fall.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, right on. And then training and ed went up substantially, it looks like, double?
Well, we have some new board members, younger fellows that joined the board, and there've been a lot of training opportunities, and so they're taking advantage of those as well. We have our new employee from last year, Jared. He's now taking training on operating a drone. It's much easier to do field work if you can use a drone. And he's also participating in a lot of other training to improve his skills. So that kind of, I hope explains that.
It looks like maybe you have a big printing increase.
Event expenses.
We're required to have an annual meeting each year. This has been the case since 1952. And we've never asked the county for any money to host that annual meeting. And we have to have that in order to provide a financial accounting to the county resident, how we're spending their money. And we're finding that venue fees and just meal is becoming kind of cost prohibitive. And we don't really go out and find an expensive speaker. We try to find someone from Purdue University or from state government that won't even charge us a fee. So we try to keep it basic, but as you know, you go out to dinner, it's a lot more expensive now than it was five years ago.
Do you have a lot of people attend that?
Last year, we had just about 100. Each year, we have a few more.
Okay. You've heard the proposal. What's your pleasure? For the motion in a second on the floor, any further discussion?
No, but I'm just going to make a statement. We're having the wrong direction. You know, we kind of said we were going to go back to 19 budgets, and, you know, we're kind of, we're going to start piecing it together, and we're going to get to a point where we're not going to like to be in. But go ahead.
Can we reduce that event?
That's training and education.
Can we do half of that amount this year and see how that flows?
Sure. I mean, I think we understand that. That's why we're only here once a year. I don't come back. Case doesn't come back during the year.
We rarely put any money for our own educational stuff over the council outside, and I mean, we don't, we'd never spend any additional money.
Is that what you're cutting in, the training in it?
Well, no, I think a training in it is probably a responsible investment, but the $4,000 for the event seems a little...
Oh, okay. Okay. Of course, that's not the only event. I should add that we also have a women's landowner workshop, we have field days. So I mentioned just the annual meeting, but that's not just for that one event.
I could stomach it a little more if we cut that fee in.
Jeremy, how do you feel about that?
Case doesn't come back during the year.
We rarely put any money for our own educational stuff over the council outside. And I... I mean, we don't... We'd never spend any additional money.
Sure. Is that what you're cutting in, the training unit?
Well, no, I think a training unit is probably a responsible investment, but the 4,000 for the event seems a little...
Oh, okay. Okay.
Of course, that's not the only event. I should add that we also have a women's landowner workshop, we have field days. So I mentioned just the annual meeting, but that's not just for that one event.
I could stomach it a little more if we cut that C and N.
Jeremy, how do you feel about that?
I'm going to stick to the original plan, so you're going to get a lot of no votes out of me for the next couple of days. Till we get to third reading, and I know where we're at. I mean, it's nothing. We've got it.
You have a challenging job.
Good point.
The motion agrees with the 2,000.
So what's that new number then, Vic? I'd like to have a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Papalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Lavis.
No.
Councilmember Sim.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetton.
No.
Councilmember Grant.
No. Sorry.
Just second reading. Yes, as we get to third pass, but as we get to... Here's the thing to keep in mind. Even if it flies on second reading, it could un-fly on third reading.
Absolutely.
And even if it doesn't fly on second reading, it can fly on third reading. This is merely to get us ready for third reading. And I think I might have to stick with Jeremy on the fact that we're so tight this year.
We are.
We really need to get...
We really are.
Now, this isn't March, so it's not like we're screaming on a desk. But we just need to keep an eye. So when we get to the end, we might be pinching pennies to make it work, Vic. So I'm going to be tough this year on that.
The odds are looking...
Yeah. But thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Treasure.
You know, I enjoy your dinner.
Oh!
I already know. I already know. Now we know where they're going. Bye!
Yeah.
So where's the increase here? Other equipment? We got some increase, is that where it's at?
I actually want to go... Just remove that and go back to same as 19.
Can I get a motion for 2019 number?
I'll make it.
Second?
Second.
Alright. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I talked to Michelle, and that's a purchase. And she said, you're going to come back, you're going to transfer some money, you think that you'll have left over a line on.
Oh, that's great.
It's good stuff.
Thank you.
Here comes... Treason.
Good evening. You did it.
So a couple of things. You're going to give a presentation, but it's going to be tomorrow at our meeting.
Yeah, we're going to do it today, and we're having a lot of technical issues.
Do you think that this presentation will have some bearing on your second reading?
I do believe it will have a bearing.
And I would strongly suggest that we bump your second reading to another night after we see your presentation.
That would probably work, because I think there's a lot of visuals.
See, I don't want to reinvent the wheel and ask the same questions tomorrow that we might ask tonight.
Right. And I think the visuals will speak strongly to what we're trying to do, because it's going to impact not only 2020, but it's going to impact the appropriation tomorrow, which is almost identical.
So we're going to hear that at... We're going to hear your presentation tomorrow. And we probably... We probably... Our best one is either Wednesday, because that one's not crazy, or the 10th.
If we can do the 10th, because they have a big presentation on Wednesday night.
So we're going to move you to Thursday, October 10th. I would have told you earlier, but it just occurred to me. It's how my mind works.
I know.
Shoots in the head.
Slowly.
So we'll see you on October 10th.
That'd be perfect.
For the second reading. Everybody okay with that idea?
Yep.
Yeah. The idea was she was going to give the presentation tonight, but because of technical difficulties...
A lot of technical difficulties.
Those will be available tomorrow?
With that?
Yeah.
You know where you know where in...
Either, no, trust me.
Okay.
I drive the car everywhere.
Alright, guys.
I'm doing the appropriation request.
Your presentation, you'll be available... You'll be able to do that tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm going to bring all the equipment, screen, my projector and everything, so hopefully we won't have any issues.
But you're not bringing Mitch for your presentation?
I am not bringing him.
You're way better than you expect.
Well, I'm at 4:30, too, so...
Is that 4:30?
Yeah, be very early.
No.
No.
I'll need to be by 5:00, though, just about.
Alright, thanks.
4:00.
Yeah. Reassessment.
How big is that pot of gold?
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
188.
He's interested in the reassessment fund, it sounds like. He's salivating like a Pavlovian dog.
He's been looking for pots of money recently.
You know what we're talking about.
How much?
148, 237.
My God. You were like Ray for Bear off the top of my...
Well, we still have to move one person.
Alright, so let's go... So what's your pleasure with the assessor's budget?
I'll make the motion.
828.411?
Yep.
Second. There's a motion, a second, at 828.411. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? As have it. Reassessment.
Consultants went up 20,000. Peter Ball?
Yes, we're having issues with appraisals and attorneys and appeals that have been dragging on for a long time. We're almost done with one, but the... We had to go to the Indiana Tax Court, which is essentially the Supreme Court for taxes. And that was expensive. And so we're hurting in that area. So that's where we're moving money into. That's how we pay our attorney and our appraisers.
So how's that fund?
And that's not going away either.
Yes, let's talk a little bit about that fund. So it's down to 100 and something?
20,000.
So how much is coming in, how much is going out? Let's get a good, real quick handle on that.
I don't have that.
We do share it with the Portage Assessor as well, so we have to be careful not to cut too much, or else we'll...
Well, I'm not going to cut. I just don't remove one employee into it to help out, that's all. Because you obviously have salaries in there now.
Well, we already moved... We worked for years to get one out of reassessment.
Yeah, that was then, this is now.
What's that?
That was then, this is now.
So what's the...
Everybody raises.
So expenses so far this year are at 401, am I reading that right?
Yes.
So it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot in this fund to... No.
No, one person. I can't, damn, I can't see.
What's it bringing in a year, though?
Well, that was my question, what's coming so far this year?
In 216? Was it 4... Was it the 461?
Pretty much utilized.
I'll add that up.
Yeah, it's also a property tax-supported fund, just like the general fund, so it's under the same levy. So if we give them more levy, we're going to see... to take away from the general.
Just like that airport.
Yeah.
Bumping everybody else up.
Exactly.
Cutting our own leg feet off.
We have a...
But basically, our projections for miscellaneous revenues are pretty in line with the current year, as the property tax collection.
What's... Do we know what the spend rate is for the rest of the year?
You mean the remaining appropriation?
Yeah.
Um...
Did you get everything you needed out of it?
Well, so far, both Portage and the county have spent 401,000, 640. Yeah. 135, 738 is left to spend for the year.
Say that again louder.
135, 738 is what's left to spend for the two combined budgets.
How much at the same time last year did we spend?
As compared to the 401.
Last year to date, are you able to...
Do you do that?
Yeah, we'll have to...
I just want to see where we were.
I want to see that a lot.
So last year, so far, they have 177,888.
They were 401, and there were 383 last year, is that the difference? This fund, though, if I understand it right, Vicki can correct me, it accumulates in three or... Every three or four years, we order special types of land orders that require large expenditure. So we do build this up over time, so that we can order certain functions that we have to do that are come up once every four years.
I didn't see the exact number, but actually wrong, but it doesn't look like you're building it up. Looks like you're spending almost everything you're bringing in.
Right, I was trying to... I thought she said that we had a balance in there.
You might have a balance, but are you spending...
Well, we're just looking at the... To the date of 9/25.
I think I'd like to just roll this back to 19 numbers and you...
19 what?
To 2019 numbers.
19 budget.
And then just, if you want to jockey some things around, or...
I just... I suggest, just roll it back to 2019 number and just... 464, 418?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, circus.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's keep it clear, that.
Can we verify maintenance agreements?
We just rolled his number to 464, 418. When he gets ready for third reading, tell us how he wants to do it. So just leave it right there.
And that's fine, but I may have to come back to you guys with certain...
See if you can, between now and third reading, if you're looking for some increase, see if there's someplace in that budget you can stomach a little decrease.
No problem.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, okay.
Trying to find... We're trying to find raises.
Well, we've been going out to redevelopment commissions, and we hope to go to Portage at some point and say, hey, you guys start helping us pay.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Some of these expenses.
Give you a loan or something.
Who are you going after?
Well, Valco and Chesterton are on board, we just need to come to Portage, but...
Portage redevelopment commission's letting out going to your line behind the city. Come on.
Really? Everybody in Squaw are in a good mood.
Alright.
Everybody in Squaw.
Alright, also come on up, Portage Township.
You've warned us, huh? You've warned us, huh?
So... Did you text me, Alto? Was it you that texted me today?
Contractual.
The answer's yes, but we're going to have to work our way to get there.
I was...
I saw that literally on my way here. Alright, so Portage Township Assessor budget.
Contractual, I'm assuming is attorneys?
No. No. Or which budget are we looking at?
Your general fund.
General fund. Oh, no, this is for Form 11. And I'm asking for an increase due to the fact I'm wanting to have CoStar. It's a site where I can go on to to see if any commercial properties have been sold within the Chicagoland area or are for sale. And the reason why I want this is because Holiday Properties had appealed the hotel Comfort and Suites there at Ameriplex. So I can't remember what the value was at the time, but I agreed to lower it, the value. And after our agreement, I received a sales disclosure where they sold it for significantly more, about $5 million more. So I was pretty upset. I didn't know, I had no access to commercial properties that are for sale. So I did not know it for sale at the time, or I would not have agreed to lower the value.
Hmm.
So I am trying to prevent that from ever happening again.
Is there something that John uses like that?
I know that he had it, but I don't know if he still does it.
Hey, John, do you hear what she's saying?
Yeah, we're following.
You're what?
Do you still have CoStar?
Yeah, we have CoStar. I don't know if the licensing would allow us to share it.
One user?
Yeah, they're pretty strict on logins for one computer.
You guys use it a lot, I mean...
Can we share that information?
Well, you must make sure it's not a licensing problem, right?
Yeah, but that's...
I think where you're going, it's in the county.
Right, it's the county. Can we use you for a research information? I mean, if it's... We're not checking a lot of properties.
They only give you one computer and one license.
But if... You need to check the property in the county. It's in the county. I mean, Portage Township is in the county.
Well, here's what I would suggest. If you roll it back to 19, let John check on whether or not there's an opportunity to share off that, and we'll come back on third reading and talk about it.
Can I ask a question, Dan?
Yes.
Can you go back and raise the assessment on the hotel?
Well, we have. Once we received the sales disclosure, we took the market adjustment off.
Okay.
So it was raised for 1982.
So you have access to sales disclosures?
Yes.
Which is a real...
And I know it was for sale prior.
I know, I understand that, but that's a real number.
Right.
Real estate people publish whatever they want. The actual selling price...
Yes, but if I had known it was for sale in 2018 for the 8.5 million, I wouldn't have lowered their 2018 appeal value.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
So that's why I need access to find my...
So I would suggest, again, back to the talk about just because we do a second reading doesn't mean it sets the stone for third. I would like to have county assessor have an opportunity to check on that, see if this... You guys can chat between now and third reading on whether or not that's something you guys can share off.
I'll check with my contact, too, with the CoStar.
Yeah, if not, we'll revisit this. And if so...
But in the end, you got the right amount of money after all, just took time to figure this out, right?
Right.
Okay.
But there was some loss of revenue in 18.
Some loss, yes, but we caught it for the next year, so when they appealed for 2019.
So what you're saying, you could eliminate the loss of revenue.
Yes, I think it's something we do need to revisit, but I would welcome and encourage a motion.
Motion at 2019 budget.
Second. For the reassessment as well, can I get that?
Nothing changed, right?
Yeah, this is the same.
Yep.
Motion, a second, to approve at 19 numbers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, as have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recorder.
Good evening, everybody.
an increase in your perpetuation, correct?
Well, we do have one little typo I just wanted to inform you about.
Lay it on me.
Let's see, the perpetuation fund, the under hourly salaries, there should be a 24,000 under 2019s. So overall, our budget's down a little bit over $30,000 altogether. So overall, our budget's down a little bit over thirty thousand dollars altogether.
So we adopted in nineteen, pull that up. Vicki, let's pick a look at these.
Yeah, you adapted twelve thousand, but there was the, either an additional or a transfer of another twelve.
So we approved at budget time twelve thousand, but we did an additional along the path for another twelve?
Yes.
So we ended the year at twenty-four. All right, so that, that makes sense.
Okay.
What other changes do we have here?
Uh, let's see.
There's maintenance agreements, a huge rebinding, I think, or is it maintenance or like that?
No, rebinding records.
Yeah, rebinding went up thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, well, getting some of our older books redone, because the binding starts to disintegrate and actually, John will probably explain a little bit better than I can.
What we, what we've done, what the office has done in the past over several decades, they get what they call mechanical books, they actually cut the book, binding off, they put the pages, each individual page in museum-type archival sleeves. In doing so, it takes one book and it makes three books out of it. So it's, and it makes it easier to get the books out, it makes it easier to get the pages out of the books for copies for the customers. And it also protects the books much longer than just having a book with open pages. There are companies that do that, that type of work, and the Recorder's Office hasn't done it for a while, and it's time that we're gonna try and suck on to do all the books. We don't have all the books done that way, less than half are done that way, so.
And then you have a pretty good sized jump on your contractual.
Which is?
What's?
Which is?
Thirty-nine fifty.
Thirty-five to seventy-five.
Yeah, thirty-nine, thirty-nine five hundred, yeah. You went from thirty-five thousand to seventy-five?
Yep, forty thousand.
Forty thousand dollars increase.
Vicki, what's the balance?
Thirty-nine fifty you're talking about?
Yes.
You went from one forty-five to, down to seventy-five thousand.
That's what we have in front of us.
What are we looking at, are we looking in the?
What's perpetuation fund?
Yes.
I'm looking at thirty-five to seventy-five.
So what we have in front of us says that was, that was approved in nineteen and that line item was thirty-five thousand, and now they request seventy-five. So let's see if that's.
You're requesting.
Vicki, what's the story on that?
Well, what was the adjusted on our contractual services in nineteen?
Vicki, what's the, what is the, before we get to the next question, let's figure out, what was, is that one that we did an additional along the way?
Yes.
When we get to something like that, I want you to chime up. When we're looking at something, because we don't see that on, in our books, I know you have it here, but if you jump, if we come across something like that and you see it, let us know.
Okay. We'll have to.
Because we're not comparing apples to apples now.
Look at what you guys did during the year. But they should be able to tell you that that was that equipment that you requested that, it wasn't in March, or Laredo?
Do you remember what that was?
Well, okay, so the additional we talked about, thirty-nine fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in a hundred and ten thousand.
That was, a large part of additional was for microfilm, the hands-free microfilm that we had to get done. There was a large amount of that. With the adjusted budget, I've got five eighty, two ninety-one, is that what we were at last year?
Nope.
I don't know where you're looking.
Well, we had a hundred and ten thousand in additionals plus twelve thousand in salaries. We actually added a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to his budget last year to a hundred and fifty, or the four fifty-eight.
We have to be slightly careful if we're looking at a budget, and this is the, you know, perpetuation fund, so it's not so earth-shattering, but I mean, if I, if I see something that we did an additional along the path, that's a budgetary increase, like we added a person, or we, that's different in my mind than a capital project, one-time purchase or something, because when we entertain those during the year, we entertain them with the notion that.
It's not gonna be on this one.
Yeah.
And that's why it went down from one forty-five to seventy-five, because we did all that microfilm that we hadn't been doing for several years, and we got it all caught up, and we are now absolutely current with that.
So.
Can I actually, can you tell me what the bottom line of this requested budget is?
It's like two ninety-two, six twenty-nine. We're talking about perpetuation.
All right, there we go.
They've gone from two eleven.
No.
Yes. Yes and no, yes, we approved two eleven as your approved budget, but no, in the sense that we've done additions.
Vicki, would you slide that screen back? So you have seven hundred thousand in cash, give or take?
Seems like it, yeah.
In a perpetuation fund.
You think we can afford to move maybe a couple people out of the general fund into that category?
May I speak?
Absolutely.
Against state code.
I see, I see salaries are in here now.
Yes, that was a raise that was appropriated a few years ago. But it's now against state code unless the Recorder gives permission to do that.
Really?
But that's the law, it's in thirty-six, two eleven.
So here's the thing.
But we also, I also, we also, there's also big projects coming up with microfilm, has to replace that.
Okay.
So here's the thing, so I agree with John to a degree, but we're talking about, because I looked into this, and he's correct in the sense that they don't, we can't make them do that.
Okay.
However, we could reduce the general fund budget.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just curious about the eighteen thousand dollars in salaries and our relief and.
We don't want, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to get into a.
Well, no, I'm just asking a question, what's that for?
That was done when I was Recorder.
Okay.
I requested raises for our staff.
Mm-hmm.
And at the time, we were told no raises, so I set up a schedule to provide raises for our people out of the perpetuation fund. That is spread out, that's not one salary, that's spread out over five people.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, five people, so.
Well, I, I guess it would be rhetorical, the fact that you can pay your people salaries, we can't pay a person?
Well, no, he, he has some. We're, we're mincing words, because here's the thing. John is, and we're, and we're not at odds with the Recorder's Office, but I mean.
Not yet, anyway.
Philosophically, we could say, we're reducing the general fund budget, we're cutting that person from the general fund, do with him what you will. Then it would be, then the Recorder would have a decision whether or not they want to downsize or come back with a proposal out of perpetuation. Well, I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, I'm not suggesting that, but let's just be clear about what's going on here.
Well, I, I guess I'm just questioning, in fact, we're sitting on seven hundred thousand dollars, we're scraping, and we're telling everybody else, no.
But the other part of that discuss, the other, the other part of this discussion is, which I'm sure John would love to tell us, is that the purpose of the perpetuation fund and the purpose behind the logic of the law, allowing them to do the things in the perpetuation fund.
Oh, absolutely.
Is that, the thought is that there's gonna be upgrading, there's gonna be.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, the, the, the keeper of the records is very important, but it was okay a few years ago to put eighteen thousand dollars worth of salaries in this fund, and now it's not.
Again, we're back to that thought, if, if the general fund won't support the staff, the Recorder can come to us and say, I think I can supplant funds from my Recorder's perpetuation. Not, but again, that's not the purpose of the perpetuation fund, but.
Well, it was a few years ago when he wanted to raise us, now it's not the purpose. And I don't. I mean, it's not like, it's not like you got seventy thousand dollars, you have seven hundred thousand dollars sitting there. We're, we're telling everybody, no, we're scraping for nickels, and they're sitting on seven hundred thousand dollars, that's all.
Well, if we, to end with this project, one project we have coming up, is gonna be replacement of all the microfilm we have in our office, that could be probably close to a half a million dollar project right now.
A little disrespect, John and Chuck, you guys always have a project. I've been sitting here for years, and every year you have a project that costs X, I mean, it never stops.
But it's being funded through the fund that is statutorily, it's statutorily defining how we can spend.
Okay, you wanna go down that road, we'll go down that road.
Hold on, hold on.
No, this is ridiculous, Dan.
No, hold on, I, I get what you're saying, but I, I.
They want, they want to spend the money when they want to spend it, but when we ask for it, we're not allowed to do it, and he throws the statute in my face.
No, well, hold on, hold on, so, it's nothing to get upset about, but.
I'm not upset.
The Recorder's perpetuation.
Mm-hmm. So. So when I make the motion to reduce his general fund by one hundred thousand dollars, am I gonna get a second? He's about ten seconds, that's coming. And then he'll come back on third reading, and let's pay the salaries on the perpetuation fund, because he wants to now.
Well, okay, first of all, John's not the, he's chief.
I know, I know, I know.
So we don't want to put him on the spot like that, but I mean.
Uh, can we calm this down and rese, rethink this, Bob, and just approve the twenty nineteen?
No, they, they, we moved people into their fund ten, twelve years ago.
I know, but we still have another reading yet, I mean, we're not making the, this is, let's, let's.
It'd be nice if they offered up something, John didn't hear it telling us what we.
You're in here, this is your moment to shine, brother. Feel like I'm taking some hits for you here, buddy.
We're giving Johnson a third reading.
Don't leave me on the ropes, Dan.
That isn't a bad idea, though, somebody said to reduce it to twenty nineteen budget.
My motion is to reduce it to twenty nineteen, that's what we're doing to everybody else, and then let's let them come back, back and plead the case and decide where we are. And Bob's got a strong point, right?
See, think about what you could offer, you know.
Let's just look at it that way, and we're not arguing and getting everybody.
All right, so get, to get.
My motion?
What's the motion?
My motion is to accept the twenty, the original budget from seventeen.
Second.
For both?
For both.
But I want to be clear, so are we talking about the two thousand nineteen with the additional property?
With the additional, yeah.
Because we have to be clear what we're talking about here, some of that stuff was at one time.
We're talking about the adopted original budget, and then we'll come back and revisit it when they come back in.
So your motion is two, two eleven, two eleven?
Right.
Is that for the second?
The only thing, yeah, the only thing is, we gotta, we're gonna have an awful lot to chew on in that third reading.
Well, that's what I said from the start, if we embark on this path, we're gonna, we're making for one heck of a third reading.
What we get paid for.
That's true. That is what we get paid for. So.
On the general fund.
So the general fund is two forty-seven, zero eight oh, they, they approved two thousand nineteen, perpetuation was two eleven, two eleven, I assume the motion's on both of those and let's just roll.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so here's the thing, when we get to third reading on this one, guys and Vicki, I want us to dissect this a little further, I want us to look at what we did on additional appropriations since the two thousand nineteen, I want a little more detail on that, and I, you guys have some capital in projects and things you want to do, which is why you were requesting the increase from the perpetuation fund, you've heard Bob, our Councilman Popperod's concerns, so maybe we can have a less heated discussion at third reading. Any questions about that?
Nope. All good. Not about that, but you guys, the Recorder, the whole title.
The Recorder.
Recorder. We're all down here in the county, which is not the case. This man, apparently, the clerk has documents coming out of her windows and basement.
What'd you point to Sims for?
Because my understanding, this guy's been giving us clerk boxes to store their records in, their stuff, yeah. It, it seems like in terms of records of our county, the auditor has records, the Recorder has records, the clerk has records.
Everyone does.
It's like we don't have a systematic or, I mean, understanding where all our records in this county are, what the retention is, I mean, is that something that would fall under your guys'?
Well, some of it does, in the sense that there is a records commission, the clerk oversees that commission, the Recorder's a member of it, almost all office owners members of it. That's for the destruction, retention of records, but.
Kick off thirty minutes.
That's just another thing, Jeremy, that state dictates how records are being maintained. Some states now, they do have something which is unique, they have what they call Land Records Office, so if someone needs to go to get a copy of the land record, instead of having to go to the surveyor to get something, and maybe the assessor, maybe the auditor, or the Recorder, they can go to that office, it's a one-stop shop, which I think is wonderful, but it's not in Indiana law, it's not, it's not something that Indiana counties do, you know, so it's kind of what you're talking about. It doesn't include the court records.
Seems to be records.
Everywhere.
Everywhere, in corners and boxes and offices they don't belong, we have a.
We should call, vote.
An issue that at some point in our future, we're gonna have to address, so.
Digitize everything.
That's all, thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Auditor. You were done? So we're done, we're gonna watch kickoff, man, we're gonna kickoff to watch, man. You're playing against the, you're playing against the bear here, come on.
Okay, okay.
Great play there.
Um, I have several budget requests tied to a new state mandate that's gonna hit our office next year, so. Basically, if you look at the general fund, there are some increases in the software rental fees when the budgets were, had to be adopted, I mean, submitted, excuse me, I had the invoice from LOA, however, we can cut that back, the software rental fees, partly because we have been advising LOA on the new transition to GAAP statements, and because we have been advising LOA on changes they can make in their software program, they are not going to charge us the same price that other counties that are going to get charged, they're giving us a credit because we have been advising them. So for software rental, we can cut that back to a hundred and forty-five thousand, and contractual can be cut back to twenty thousand. We are seeing some increases in the vendor costs, so we do have to pay for those. The big increase that I'm asking for, even though it's only three thousand dollars, is something that's very important, and that's for training and ed related to the new GAAP project.
Does someplace else in your budget you can find this money, or is there something, you've heard us tell every, all the shoulders, probably?
Not in the general fund, not in the general fund. I'll take it out of the non-reverting fund because training and ed is that important. If you want to have a generally accepted accounting.
Yeah, will the non-reverting fund sustain that?
Yes.
Then I.
As long as we don't dip into it too much because of fund, I've been very frugal with that.
I, you're the best auditor that this county has ever had, but I want, I want you to, I want you to follow the suit, and I want you to hold your numbers in the general fund to nineteen.
Okay.
Doesn't, like Dan said, it doesn't mean it's gonna stay, we just gotta get there and, we gotta prioritize, we're not going back because we've picked all these old.
If you find it elsewhere, out of the non-reverting fund, Vicki, go back to, go back to.
At some point, I would like you to take, to give you a visual look at what this mandate is before us, it has a fiscal impact.
I understand.
And I can do what every other county is doing and contracting out, in which case.
We don't want you to do that, we want you.
Lower that pause, Vicki.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
We want you to come back to us.
Every year.
That was a small fee, we saw him up to four hundred thousand.
We don't want you to do that, we want you to do the wonderful work that you've been doing.
And that's why the training and ed is so important.
So I would like to just see if you could pull that, and then we're gonna, you know, out of the non-reverting, and let's, we want to give it to you, but we don't want to, I mean, I want you to pull it out of the general fund and pull the money out of it, not, you rolled your eyes at me, you're confused.
So basically, take down training and ed to what it was, but put the increase in the non-reverting.
That's what I would like to.
Very good.
Everybody, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Are you taking the general fund back to nineteen?
Yes.
So we'll just take the increases for the various software rentals and contractual